Anyway, swearing up new planning board members and zoning board member. You want to, Ryan Osborne first. Ryan, thank you very much for volunteering to the zoning board of appeals.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Ryan Osborne.
I, Ryan Osborne.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
Zoning Board of Appeals member.
Zoning Board of Appeals member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Next we have Shereen Questa.
Shereen Questa, planning board member.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Shereen Questa.
I, Shereen Questa.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
Planning Board member.
Planning Board member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Jacqueline Davis Norris. Planning Board member.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jacqueline Davis Norris.
I, Jacqueline Davis Norris.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
Planning Board member.
Planning Board member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Joanne Wylie, planning board.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Joanne Wiley.
I, Joanne Wiley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
Planning Board member.
Planning Board member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
I'll just get this out of your way.
It's thirty-eight thousand six hundred dollars that was requested for the outstanding work on the site plan of your building. John Petrosini, our engineer, the value of completed items was calculated to be twenty-one thousand one hundred dollars. Incompleted items remain at seventeen thousand five hundred. Second page, we have the stormwater system, approved bond amount of seventeen hundred dollars. He's asking that we hold back seventeen hundred dollars. Forest paving parking space was completed. Value of remaining work is nothing. It was three thousand dollars. Site lighting was seventeen thousand five hundred. We completed that work, so there's no one being retained on that there. As-built topography survey, the bond amount was six thousand dollars. Completed work to date is zero, but he not giving that site.
Everything has been completed. He had specific letters from Challenger Engineering of all the work that's been done. I believe his concern was that he felt it might have been a board issue, a planning board issue. But every item actually has been one hundred percent completed. We have the documentation that's all been forwarded to John Petrosini. He did receive all the as-built. The topographic survey did get to him this morning. That was one item, but that was not a bond. Oh, no. The as-built, no, the as-built actually was to him.
He was waiting for the topo.
For the topo.
So if that's.
Yeah, that's the one item.
Yes, if that's what you meant.
Yeah, that would be the one item that is actually, he got, received this morning, probably didn't get a chance to receive.
The fence along the property line, the dumpster and the stormwater system have to be, they're, you guys are coming for the planning report. So that's going to be part of the event.
Right, that's the understanding.
So that's why we're withholding that from the system. This is unacceptable to me.
Was there any resolution of, we had put an application in weeks ago to get on with the board, but obviously we understand that there was some members that had been.
You're on the adjutant for tomorrow.
So that's the question. We can come tomorrow.
You're on the adjutant, I think you're first on the adjutant.
All right, great, that's awesome.
We think we find one adjutant today.
So there's a planning board meeting tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Even with the old voting and everything?
There's no voting here at all so far.
So he, he has everything for this one.
The topo I can speak on, that's, that's, the as-built is the only area.
Yeah, well, I have a copy if I have to.
The other three items I can tell you, it's because you need plenty more to prove all about it.
So the village will release the check in the amount of twenty-one thousand one hundred dollars tomorrow. We had this conversation. I don't care.
So now you got to vote, you got to come here tomorrow night?
Yeah.
Well, you know, why don't we just pick up the check when we come here tomorrow?
That's right.
And maybe you'll release the rest.
If, if John has that.
He should have everything, because the fence is there, the frame is there.
If he has time to review it, I mean, we could call down.
If he could, because he's had this for more than a month at this point. And if he doesn't have time to review it at this point, then that's.
Because you cannot release, the three items that have to happen, the goal cannot be released until that's finished.
No, I understand that, but he was talking about John reviewing. He's had the.
Yeah, they totally.
They reviewed it this morning.
Yeah.
Everything else, the fence, the stormwater, he's had for.
You're on the adjutant for tomorrow.
So the check you have tomorrow.
We appreciate that.
So you're just going to follow the motion.
Right, that's why I was raising my hand.
So we need a motion to release twenty-one thousand one hundred dollars escrow to Orange County Babel with recommended bond amount to be retained, seventeen thousand five hundred dollars.
The check should be OCWV LLC.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Kolar, make the motion. One second. Deputy Mayor Ladado, vote for trustee Kolar.
Yes.
Trustee Sampson. Trustee Kolar.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Ladado. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, we have a presentation tonight from John.
John Beane. Sorry, hi, John.
Regarding our comprehensive planner. And we will get into the discussion after he's made his presentation.
So let me just go to.
Did you say?
I hear it running, yeah.
All right.
Okay. John, deploy your lights.
Good. Thank you, mayor, trustees, friends, residents. My name is John Beane. I'm a principal with Beane Planning and Design. We're a landscape architecture and town planning consulting firm. We're glad to be here. And we've been asked to put together a proposal to help the village complete its comprehensive plan. And I notice the village has been working on this for a while. And it's a really important document. It helps establish goals and strategies for the village moving forward. And it's also the basis upon which your land use, zoning codes, et cetera, are based. So tonight, what I have is just a short presentation. I'm going to give you a little bit of background on our company, our firm. And I'll give you like an overview of, just a high-level picture of the major steps involved in the comprehensive plan process. It's a beautiful village here. Speaking of beautiful, get these people here. Since the Beane, my boss, my wealthy partner and my wife, she's the president of our company. She's a landscape architect. Dana Brady is an environmental planner in our company. Amy Fitzgerald is a senior planner. This is the core of the folks that will be working on the project. We're, it's not the top, we're a certified women-owned business enterprise with the state of New York. We're, we're based in Saratoga Springs, a lovely community just up the Hudson Valley from here. I know we call this the Mid-Hudson Valley, but actually technically Saratoga is the Mid-Hudson because Hudson begins in the Adirondacks in Lake Tereau, Crown. So you know that way up north. And so we're, still anyways, that's our office, it's in an old school. We're very proud of it, it's got a lot of history. But we do work here, we've done a lot of work in Orange County, in the Hudson Valley. I'll tell you a little bit more about it. We celebrated our beginning of year twenty-eight yesterday in our company. So this is just a list of some of the communities in which we've worked. Albany, Niagara Falls, on western New York, town of Beatman, over in, across the river. Dutchess County, Clarkstown, down, doing several projects down there, down in Rockland County. We helped revitalize the new city, which is a big project. We worked on that project actually for eight years with the town. Clifton Park, we worked with that town up in the Saratoga County region for many years. And Screenbush, comprehensive plan, the Red Gill, you know. Recently, we're down in, we're in Ulster County, working the town of Marlborough right now, helping them revitalize their waterfront. Western New York, on Pittsford, we worked with them for twenty years, town, the village of Pittsford. Doing a lot of different projects. I'll tell you a little bit more about that. It was, the next slide, I'm going to tell you a few more projects. We're working over in Westchester now and the town of Cortland. And the village of Buchanan, you all may know, that's where Indian Point, the nuclear plant is. And that being shut down, it's a big change to that town. We're helping Buchanan and Cortland looking at their waterfront, the Hudson, including the nuclear power plant site. We're developing a waterfront revitalization plan, which is like a comprehensive plan, except it's only focused on the waterfront. We're working on a village comprehensive plan up in Ballston Spa, which is in Saratoga County. Recently, a couple of years ago, we worked with the town of Cornwall and the village of Cornwall and Hudson on an open space index. And we also did a similar project in Blooming Grove. It's kind of a joint project, worked with Orange County Land Trust. And the village of Washingtonville was included in that project. We have all that environmental data from that work. There's a bunch of other, you know, projects to show you, we work in the villages around the state, we have all experience in village work, downtown design, new faults. We did open space plan, open space plan implementation there. Spring Valley, downtown design guidelines. Hudson River Greenway, we worked on creating a trail master plan. The Greenway is always going to have a trail as a heart of it. And it's going from Manhattan up to Albany. But they never really finished a plan. So we partnered with our company to help develop the trail plan for that Greenway corridor. That has been implemented with the Empire State Trail Plan, which we also worked on. And there's some opportunities here right in here. The village to have a rail trail due to the community. We've done a lot of that work. And these are really, I think these are the kind of things that, once they're built, they become cherished treasures for the community. Because there's nothing like, I think, walking or taking your family out or getting out on a bicycle and taking advantage of these kind of places. In Newburgh a few years ago, we helped develop design guidelines for Broadway. Just a sampling of some of our, our experiences. So some awards we've been honored with, we can take a look at those, but we don't have to dwell on those. We're very proud of that work, though. Some work that we get recognized, actually, I guess I'll talk a couple of these. The third one down, the Planning Federation, that's a group, I think some of you folks that just got inducted into the Planning and Zoning Board, you'd probably become members or get active with that. Orange County is very active. We are recognized, we won the Palmeri Award for Innovative Zoning, where we created, we took, I don't know, four or five different zoning districts. Made one zoning district up in Pittsford, New York, and did some pretty cool stuff there. There's another, here's another slide, one for, we can just go ahead, Joe. That was one of our nice projects. So part of our work with the village will be to help consolidate, take the work you've done, creating a vision statement for the village and goals and objectives and finishing, taking that work forward. So we, what we would do is help create a series of outreach, community involvement events, right? So that, get folks here around the table. We had a great, great series of meetings in Blooming Grove Project with folks. I forget, we had like almost a hundred people at our workshop doing that open space index. And it's really well received. So we'll, that's to be part of our process. We also can also develop specific discussion topics. There may be three or four, two or three or four or five different topics in the village that the mayor and the board and the other folks want to focus on. So we can kind of tackle those in a very focused way. So that would help with designing those sessions and doing that work. And part of that work, too, is having material for people to look at and understand. You know, so for example, if we're talking about open spaces and land conservation, natural resources, we want to have information for you about flood zones and wetlands and topography and open, you know, natural characteristics and things like that. Transportation and economic development will have information about that, et cetera. So next slide, please. Just some of the renderings and drawings that we do to help folks understand that top drawing is a rendering for the new city, Main Street. I'm particularly proud of that rendering is that's, I would say all, except for the fact that it's kind of a pastel, it's exactly what it looks like now up there. If you go and stand in that corner right across from, right downtown near the Rockland County Courthouse, it's just like that. Down here are some other renderings we did. There's, just to show folks like what the ideas are, whether it's, this is a white-handled overlook or whether it's shaping up a new building on that important corner of the town, how to design things that kind of speak to what you expect in a community. I think it's important, one of our plans, and whatever zoning in fact, doesn't tell you what you want. Often the way our laws are written, they just say what you don't want. So there's a lot of room in between, right? So that's what we help do. Okay? So we work with numerous, like you can see numerous projects. We, I think the best of our work is when we do have longer-term relationships with communities. So we can help not just make a plan, but help implement the plan, work with your legal counsel on drafting local laws, provide grant funding, you know, developing these things. These are projects really, not just plans. Okay, let me just keep going. So we can just go through these really quickly. The town of Pittsford is a client we have for a long term, probably more than twenty years, we've worked with that. So we started with the comprehensive plan. After the comprehensive plan, they asked us to help them implement that plan. They had a few big issues and, Joe, just click through these out and make this kind of quick.
You didn't go click.
I'm sorry. I'll say click, okay? We expanded that work, collaborating with the village of Pittsford, so that you have a, it's a kind of a classics. You have a town of Pittsford in the middle and then you have the village surrounding it, town inside, town outside. So we understand how that works, the fiscal side of it. We worked, this is a quote from the town, this is really nice of them, supervisor. And one of the things I'm really proud of, too, is that the power of a plan is really something. I've really had a chance over the years to see what a good plan, if you've got good people behind it, what you can actually do. And this is something that's been a real testament of our legacy. I can look now, when I drive across New York State, it's hard for me not to go through a county at least, in many towns where we haven't worked. You know, whether it's up in the Adirondacks or it's out in, working with, in Niagara Falls, in the city of Niagara Falls, or with the Seneca Nation Indians, Newburgh, you know, we just, it's really been a pleasure. Some of the accomplishments of Pittsford, one of the big issues in that town, similar to you all here in the Hudson Valley and Blooming Grove and Cornwall is the, we don't stop building things and that's a good thing, right? We are building, building, building. We're really good at building stuff, us humans. But quite frankly, if we don't find places to preserve, we will build every square inch of every place on this planet, I guarantee it, you know, I think you all agree. And so part of building a community is building conservation areas and building parks and trails and these things, right? So we went and just look at Long Island and Manhattan to see how real that statement is, right? So this town, one of the things was, they want to, they had a bunch of farmland, they want to not develop. There's a map of the town, you can see it was almost totally built out. And so the town said, well, they're going to really build out all these farms. Town people said, no, let's do something different if we can, you know? And so they said, well, let's, how much would it cost if we create a conservation program? Can we do some funding? Can we bond for it? They decided to afford a bond for nine point nine, up to nine point nine million dollars. They started applying for grants. They got three and a half million dollars in grants. They got some of the landowners to sell the land at a bargain sale. There's millions of dollars in donations of lands. They didn't even spend the whole nine point nine million dollars that they bonded. They were able to preserve these farms. And it's, I'll tell you one thing, too, not only those families are very happy, the residents are happy, too, because they gained the benefit of those lands, they can see them, they can enjoy them. Some of them have access for the public. And the property values in the town have gone up, right? It's been a good investment in the town. Okay? And so we are involved with that, we have been beginning of that. And so a lot of communities now, this was, we did this, too, twenty-five years ago, this project. So it's been a nice legacy. There's a lot of communities now that are, we're still working doing this kind of work. It's click.
There you go, you're getting it.
So we did, you know, all the work we're not, we do conservation, but we also, economic development is important. Part of that is understanding what kind of opportunities there are and what will fit into your community in terms of new development, what's the right amount, what's too much, right? We work with communities in Boogler for you to help figure, you know, determine that as best we can. We help revitalize Monroe Avenue, which is a main drag, New York State Route thirty-one, has thirty thousand cars a day, busy place. We help get some trail monies. And we've done some other projects, click for this, for the community. Interesting, too, some of the things that come out of this. The supervisor of the town that we work with, he's since retired. He won, he went, was nominated one day, Alexander called her National Award for Conservation, which is kind of a big deal. Went down to Washington National Press Club, there's a ten thousand dollar honorary that comes with it for that work that we did together. And he really led the political side of it. We were just the planners in the background, right? But, and so I mentioned that. And also, our work was recognized by the American Planning Association with a national award for planning for that work. And it was, and so we, so segueing to, to our proposal for Washington Village, what we've done, we put together what I call just kind of a classic planning model where we have a process for revisioning and outreach, click. And we have a process to communicate, you know, using the village website, using social media, using press releases, old-fashioned things like hanging posters up on, you know, where we can, they get the word out, emails. So folks are engaged. The next phase is the inventory analysis, where we look at the environmental setting, the community setting and document. Land uses and opportunities, this is one of the images from our work in Blooming Grove, there's Washington Village, you'll see some of the Blooming Grove crossroads in Coles area. You know, these really neat, it's called Lang, Perry Creek with Back Mountain. These beautiful resources around here, community. Okay, click. And so what we will be, you know, doing is working on these priorities and strategies. Here's kind of a list of things that we gleaned from your planning document as you've developed it so far and some of our thoughts in terms of some of the. as you've developed it so far, and some of our thoughts in terms of some of the things we want to focus on, future land use, design of the community character, your historic district, your transportation patterns, open space, environmental sustainability, resource conservation, community services, education, you know, recreation, seniors, public safety, economic vitality, compatible growth, and housing needs and opportunities. So the idea is, in the big pictures, develop your comprehensive plan as a, as a piece of, if you would, intellectual property, capital, software, thoughtware, and strategies to help the village move forward. Here's some of the, you know, focusing on things that will help, you know, restore, grow your village in a smart way that fits your unique character. I do know, I don't know enough about the village, but you guys do, which is great. And that's where we get together, okay? But my, my mother-in-law was born here, Gloria DePaul, a long, long time ago. And I, my boss is from Newburgh, so we have, we are, you know, we have, do have some connections in the area. I thank you for your attention.
Okay, as we were gathering names for our planning board and zoning board members, we did have a few residents that said, I would rather just be on the comprehensive. So what we're doing right now is collecting any other names of residents, residents of the village of Washingtonville, who want to be involved in our comprehensive plan. If you do, please email Christine, our village clerk, with your interest. Please include your address, okay? It's very important that, that we have people in the, in the village of Washingtonville. We are looking for, what, business owners?
Multiple different types of stakeholders.
Stakeholders.
Any walk of life that you have, someone who lives in the village. Your viewpoint is important, yeah?
We will set meeting dates, and we'll try to be as flexible as, as possible. There will be some meeting, you know, during the week, we'll have some at night, we'll have some on Saturdays, all right? So there will be a lot of opportunity to have your voice heard in, in the, in the planning. And John, I guess when something is, really needs to be nailed down, it's a public hearing, my guess, right?
And so public means we'll hear those sounds, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll schedule, we don't want to publish a schedule of the, of the monthly meetings that's more needed, as they're given, planner will guide, any additional notices that need to occur.
Great.
And it, it sounds like from John's presentation, that there will be visioning sessions, which is anticipated to be folks far down the comprehensive planning committee. Do you want to try to get as many folks as you can to those visioning sessions?
Yes. We can't hear you guys on the end.
Do you think that will be in this building here, or would we need to set up meetings at the middle school that we did, at the larger venue, right?
It, you can coordinate, am I right? We can coordinate that with, with John, but typically you do want a larger space so that we can get folks in. Usually you bring in tables, by the ones I've seen, you bring in tables, so folks are not sitting in this aisle, they're more of a round table. I actually just did one a couple of weeks ago, the village of Monroe held one, and there was a series of tables around the room with different groups, and groups reported that.
Any questions, man? Do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Okay, we want to set a date and time for a public hearing, so we can enter into a moratorium. Local law establishing a six-month moratorium prohibiting review and approval of applications, certain land development applications in the village of Washingtonville. This local law shall be referenced as local law establishing a six-month moratorium. Moratorium prohibiting review and approval of applications of certain land development applications in the village of Washington. Definition, code means the village of Washingtonville code. Plan means the village of Washingtonville comprehensiveness plan. Village means the village of Washingtonville. Village board means the Board of Trustees of the village of Washingtonville. Village clerk means the village clerk of the village of Washingtonville. Land use approval means building permits, certificates of occupancy or completion, site plan approvals, subdivision plans, special use permits, and variances.
Obviously, the purpose and intent of this, the summary of it is based upon the fact that the village of Washingtonville is entering into a period where they are final, like, formally and finalizing a comprehensive plan. We'll say, we'll say update, although there is some question as to processing with the last plan, but we'll say update for, for our purposes. Either way, whether it's an update or whatever the status of the last plan is, a moratorium is appropriate in this case, because you want to put a stop to any development from this point forward, while you have time to, to review any land uses that you may want to align with the future vision of your, of your village. So during the effective period of this local law, no land use approval, which was previously defined, shall be issued for any use or development in any districts within the village without approval of the village board of the village of Washingtonville, which approval will not be considered except in the event of a proven hardship, as the village board says it does. Section seven of the law deals with the hardship. You do need to provide some type of, we recommend that you provide some type of relief valve to any potential applicants coming in, so that would be in the form of a hardship variance, which would go through, not the Board of, not the zoning board of appeals, it would be handled by the village board of trustees. So just to reiterate, you know, the planning board will not accept any applications during this time. They're not going to grant any approvals, or any reviews of any site plan, special use permits, subdivisions. Similarly, the CBA is not going to accept any applications or grants any approvals for variances. And the building department is not going to accept any building permits or applications. There's a list of specific exemptions, which the board would need to consider. Any project that receives a negative declaration, or if only agency has accepted a fully completed DDIS, the thought being there that they've already done substantial work into a project, probably at this point allowing them to move forward, that's a consideration for the board of trustees. Any project that has received final project approval, including positional final approval, yeah, same, same idea, that they've already done substantial work. Any application that was received by the planning board on or before October thirty-first. Any applications for an amended site plan, so long as the use is currently existing on the site and in compliance with the zoning code. And the proposed action about resulting in the use being intensified, or resulting in increase in square footage of any structures related to the use on the site, but not including site plans for proposed change in use. Again, giving, giving some relief to, to potential development, or applicants, rather, existing development, existing businesses, most, you know, the village could give consideration to them. Also giving consideration to residential uses, so any applications for additions to residential or multifamily dwellings, along with the application to propose more than a thirty percent increase to the existing square footage, and any applications related to interior renovations only. So those exceptions are pointed, of course, you know, you want to, you want to balance the incoming comp plan with your, your new visions, you're going to set out on this new plan, you want things to be moving forward aligned with your goals that you identify as the comp plan with the help of the planner, but balancing that with understanding that, of course, there are existing residents and businesses that want to, you know, have somebody to contribute. And again, like I said, there's a hardship, yep, there's a hardship variance, which will only be needed if somebody is trying to resent themselves from a moratorium, and there'd be a public hearing in such a case, so the public would be aware, of course. And any penalties for not complying with the law.
Now, as far as section eight, they, they find not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars per day. Is that issued from the code enforcer through your office, or how would that work?
Yeah, that would be, that would be issued through the buil, the building inspector the same way, any other, I can make that, that should be noted, that's a good point. So I'll add something that gives the building inspector explicit authority to issue,
Okay, we also wanted to know, at the end of the six months, how, how far in advance do we need to give the public if we wanted to extend it for any length of time after that?
The same, it would be the same as if you're issuing a new, you would have to issue a new local law, so.
You can, lots of times the moratoriums have a, an extension built in, which we can easily add, where by resolution, you can do an additional six months, maybe two periods of six months. After that, should it take longer than that, you would need to do an adopt, you would need to go through a second local law process to adopt it further. Generally speaking, once we get to eighteen months, two years, that's when the courts start getting testing about moratoriums.
When Ralph had it in there, I was going to say what Liz just said. If it could be included.
The, the odds that you'll be finished with this process in six months, no matter how good John is, and I'll say, that would be really very optimistic. So I would recommend something that gives you a little bit of flexibility to another extension.
I would agree, the purpose of doing the six months is because you do want to be conservative when you issue it, obviously you don't want to go over the amount that you'll need. A chance, I'm definitely going to be closer to a year.
So should we just start with a year?
Ten?
Usually it's two six-monthers. So it's, the second one is by resolution, you calendar it, when you get to, when you get month five, your next regular board meeting, we have a touch, we have a touch base with our consultant, with our comprehensive plan committee, where are we? Yep, you're not going to be finished, motion to extend.
So we can, you can have the.
We can include the language then.
Right, and we, we can have the, as it is now, six months, and then two resolutions that would be allowed to extend it up to eighteen months total.
And if you went further than that, you would need to adopt another local law.
We can put that into our law now, okay?
That's one way to do it, I can revise it to include that if the board wishes.
I do, yeah.
That doesn't mean that we're going to sit around for the first couple of months.
And, and once you do adopt a moratorium, it is incumbent on the village to show that you're moving forward in good faith by holding meetings, and, and that's, you know, by hiring a consultant, by holding your meetings, that's one way of showing you good faith that you're moving forward.
And who are the observers of that?
The easy answer is the, the developers that would like to challenge the moratorium, so.
That was not the answer, right?
Yeah, those are, yeah, Liz is pointing out factors that have been used in court cases, where it was found that municipality wasn't moving forward in good faith enough, or to not have an established basis to move, to continue a moratorium. So in order to have that, you, and I think the village has every intention of establishing the comp plan committee, beginning the process with, with your, with your planning professional, and, and embarking on, you know, scheduling all of those meetings and being ready to move.